Education on Thursday, May 1st at 6:00 PM to order. The first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and may I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections? All right, the next order of business is the appointment of the unexpired term. I just wanted to start by welcoming you all here and thanking you for your interest in becoming part of this body. You are all very highly qualified and talented people. And so if for some reason you are not chosen tonight, I hope that you show up in April and put your name in for, to run then. So first, we will allow each applicant three minutes to tell us whatever they want. And I'm just gonna go in order of how they're listed on this attachment. So first is Kieran. And please tell me if I pronounce your name wrong. Gutting or is that correct? See here? Nope, okay. Next, we have Patrick McMackin. And if you wanna come, there's a podium right here. You can come up to if you'd like.
This is certainly an unusual setting for me. I've been at board podiums before. And through the years when my sons were finishing elementary school and in middle school, I attended something on the order of over twenty board meetings as an observer. As a matter of fact, at one point, I looked up and realized that I had more board meeting time logged than more than half the people staring at me from across the room. This is not the case. I haven't been to a board meeting in a while. I did view the last one. So I'm deeply informed, but kind of out of date. My wife and I arrived in the district in 1997. The boys followed about five years later, in 2002. We've been a district family since our first visit from our parents as teachers educator in October of 2002. I was fundraising director of the ECC PTO for three years. Dr. Hubenstrait at PTO meetings would bring us up to date on things that were coming, like the Regio immediate program. We were all pretty well informed about the program by the time it arrived. And we were going through things like the Argers Foundation gave us a grant to prepare the atelier that turned out to only pay for the demolition. It's kind of been the thing that characterized funding. It sounded like a good shot, but didn't always make it all the way through for a plan. We celebrated with the school when the group of teachers who went to visit the headquarters of Regio in Italy came back with the designation of the ECC as a teaching facility for Regio. And I'll point out that I was being educated about Regio in ECC highest chairs. So that was dedication. Our sons were in the first wave of Regio. We're glad to see that it's continued and believe it's very valuable. In the boys' elementary years, I was more involved in coaching for MRH youth sports, coached around the seasons, pretty much through middle school. Obviously, high school was a different manner. I stepped back then, became involved at the boosters club, spent, well, the epidemic years make it a little vague, but for two or three years, I think I was designated secretary. But we were working pretty disorganized in those days. Starting in the elementary years, I was seated on the African-American Community Advisory Committee, the AACAC. And you can be forgiven for not having ever heard of that group. It was board-level committee. The primary target we were given was to address the gap in standardized scores between black and white students. As fast as we came up with programs, we would have a discussion about, well, how is the community gonna react if we do this to help disadvantaged students or students who are having problems? Are they gonna complain? Well, we're specializing, we're boosting one group. What are you doing for the rest of the school? And as we implemented these programs, as fast as we implemented them, they benefited the whole school. Response to intervention comes out of those years. So we, as we didn't really close the gap. I think a lot of us came to the conclusion that it was time to talk about moving the goalposts and think about what we're really measuring. But when Karen moved to superintendent and U-City robbed us of Mike Macklin and David Harris moved on, there was really no leadership for the committee and it kind of rolled off the board. Over the, I've been part of the parent group, participating in at least two M-SIPS and two C-SIPS and a long-term planning committee. Outside the district, a few months before the boys were born, I was sworn in as a court-appointed special advocate, which makes me a court officer in the city family court circuit. At this point, I am the longest-serving CASA at 23 years in both the city and county circuits. I have, on several occasions, as a CASA, as a representative of the court, as somebody who sits on the group that makes the decisions about the kids' futures, I have made adoption decisions, very critical decisions that we had to think through. We did separate families. We did unite new families. And we decided not to separate families. In my mind, none of those decisions is really final. They always, I always think about them in terms of, well, what do we do with future cases? How do we make this better? So I've done that.
I'm sorry, we, I don't, we only have, we only have three minutes each, but I would love to listen to you talk all night, I'm sorry. Thank you so much. All right, next we have Rachel Lindsay.
All right. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to stand before you and introduce myself. My name is Rachel Lindsay. I'm an MRH mom and MRH youth sports coach, senior capstone judge, a longtime resident of Maplewood and a brand-new resident of Richmond Heights. My great-grandmother was a teacher in a one-room schoolhouse a century ago. Her son, my grandfather, taught physics and astronomy at a local college for nearly thirty years. Perhaps it is no accident that after a girlhood filled with learning, I too became a teacher. I teach American history and culture at St. Louis University. All of these pieces of me are why I have applied to fill this vacancy. But rather than reciting my resume, I think I can best convey my aspirations for this appointment with a brief reflection. In the past week, I've had two opportunities to see this district up close, beyond the routine of drop-offs and bus stops and all those emails. First, last week, my youngest kid had her final IEP meeting. While I am, of course, very proud of her for the work she has put into her progress, what struck me most in that meeting was the deep care displayed by her support team. Teachers who show up not only as instructors, but as advocates. Front office staff who remember faces and names. And of course, the resources this community has invested in so that all kids can rise to their full academic potential regardless of what barriers may exist when they first walk into their classrooms. Second, last night, I attended the middle school band concert. As I said, in the auditorium surrounded by other families who braved a soggy weeknight to watch their kids perform, I was again struck by the privilege of being in a district where the arts are not only supported, but celebrated. Where gardens and parades and concerts and museums and plays and musicals are as routine as math quizzes and spelling tests. This is no accident. This is an intentional statement of values. And in 2025, it is a radical idea clothed in mundane actions. All kids deserve to flourish. And we, their parents, their educators, their neighbors, are willing to put in the work to make it so. Of course, our district is not perfect. The world is changing faster than we can account for in our curricula. Technology both enhances and harms classrooms. Disinvestment from state and federal agencies means tough decisions that probably have no, probably have no correct answers, but plenty of wrong ones. As a deliberative body, the Board of Education is a vital piece of the district's ecosystem. I believe the work of the board is to listen to experiences and expertise from within the district community and beyond, to consider the strengths and limitations of existing knowledge, and to deliberate with intention to empower every student toward a life of confident curiosity in whatever they pursue after graduation. So who am I? I'm a historian who has deep personal and professional commitments to the vital role of public education today. But more than that, I am a mom who has entrusted her kids in these schools. I'm a neighbor who loves this community, and I'm hopeful that I can contribute to the work ahead in whatever ways are asked of me. Thank you for this time.
Thank you. Next, we have Loretta Colvin.
My name is Loretta Colvin. Thank you for the invitation to introduce myself to the board and the community at large. I'm a parent of two high school students who've attended MRH since their start at the ECC. I've seen firsthand the amazing work that MRH does for our students despite the challenges faced by public schools today. I'm pleased to have the recommendation of the MRH National Education Association, or NEA, for the position on the school board. My experience at MRH includes volunteering and supporting various extracurricular activities, including track, cross-country, soccer, speech and debate, and mock trial. I'm also co-treasurer of Keep MRH Strong, which recently supported the successful passage of propositions B and E, bringing additional resources to the MRH school district. Outside of MRH, I'm a nurse practitioner and a university instructor. As detailed in the CVI provided to the board, I have a long history of leadership and involvement in many professional organizations. Through this professional life, I have also, I also have experience in legislative advocacy. I'm a supporter of public schools. I know I would not be where I am today without the Columbia Public School District in central Missouri. It is important to me that all children have the same opportunities that I did, irregardless of the level of support or lack thereof available to them outside of school. I've seen how MRH has built a strong foundation to help children in our district reach their highest potential. It is my hope that my qualifications best match the board's goals for continuing our tradition of delivering high-quality education to our students. I wish you the best in your decision-making tonight. I realize the difficulty you face in choosing from so many highly qualified candidates that all want to keep our district strong.
Thank you. All right, next we have. We have Dr. Robert Dillon, who is out of town for work, but is gonna present via Zoom for us. Thank you.
Hello and good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
All right. I'm glad to be with everyone. It has been just an honor to think about and reflect on the fact that for the last 20 years, this community has served me and my family so well. When my daughter, who's now a sophomore in college, was born, that was the first year that we were in Maplewood. And ever since, the community and the school district has been a wonderful lifeline for my family. And I'm honored to think that there's a potential for me to give back in the way that the community has given to me. I'm a 30-year public educator. I've worked around St. Louis, around the nation, around the world, with some of the best school systems out there. And I'm really excited to bring some of that experience to this board position. I've worked on other boards of education. I am excited about the fact that not only would I be a board member if you selected me, I'd be a second-generation board member. And if my dad was here tonight, he would be really excited after his 15 years of experience on the Board of Education at my alma mater, Pattonville. So it's nice to think that that could be my opportunity to serve. And I keep saying the word "serve" because to me, that's what this is all about. It's an opportunity for me to be a part of a team. I think I'm a great teammate. I think I'm someone that works with all kinds of different people. I'm a good listener. I ask good questions. I seek solutions. And I think ultimately, that's the member you should be looking for, is someone that has energy for the work, experience, and understands how schools and the best schools in the countries perform, both at the board level, at the administrative level, and then also someone that wants to see this community grow and go. The board should be commended for their work and getting our recent bond issues passed, but it goes beyond that. Now we have to execute on those things, and I would love to be a part of that work. And so thank you for considering me as a candidate. Thank you for making it possible for me to be a part of this evening from Colorado. And I look forward to supporting the board and the school district as we go forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, next we have Mr. Demetrius Easley.
All right, good evening. Thank you for allowing me to present myself and introduce myself. As she just said, my name is Demetrius Easley. I am a contract lead professionally for the Department of Defense over at Scott Air Force Base. I have been a engineer, software engineer, for the last 16 years. I've spent nine years in the district, in previous or currently five years here in Richmond Heights, but on and off in between Maplewood and Richmond Heights for approximately nine years. I do have a student at the elementary school, MJ is his name. He's a fifth grader. The reason why I want to serve on the board is because I have a heart for serving. I have a passion for serving, but to be more precise, to be an advocate for children. And I just think that this would be an opportunity for myself and the rest of the board members to work with Dr. Jamison and achieving the vision that she has for this, for this district to move forward in the future. But to also be an advocate for the facility, faculty and teachers, so that we can create an environment that keeps top-notch talent and teachers, so that overall, our kids can receive the education and the curriculum that they need to succeed. As a candidate, I bring the experience with working with the community as a police officer. I was a police officer for 10 years, respectively, with St. Louis City and nearby Clayton. And in that tenure, in that career, I've worked countlessly with the community, not just for far off, but hand-in-hand, walking the streets, working with the community to solve the issues that come up by using conflict resolution and other problem-solving techniques. But I've also currently served as a volunteer for the Missouri Children's Burn Camp, MCBC, and that is through the Burn Recovery Support Group as a burn survivor myself. And what we do there is we help facilitate a, at Burn Camp every summer, where children who are, who's survivors of third degree and fourth degree burns, they can come and have a place for them to just be children for a week. And what I do there is not only camp council, but we meet with other members of our MCBC to set policies to make sure our children are safe and make sure that they are receiving an adequate curriculum and activities that will help facilitate a, an interesting week, I would say, for every summer. And that's about it. I'm pretty green, but I, like I said, my, I have a passion for serving, and I just think that this would be an opportunity, again, not just for my son, but to be an advocate and be a voice for children in this community and just be a great opportunity to help serve MRH's community. And I thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Brad Jackson.
My notes here. Hi, y'all. I'm Brad Jackson. I want to thank everybody for having us here and getting to stand before you, and especially in such good company. Thank you. My name is Brad Jackson. I'm a local small-business owner, a full-time, part-time touring musician, working on that, a nonprofit founder, and most importantly, a proud parent of two kids in the MRH school district. My kids started in preschool and kindergarten, now they're in fifth and seventh grade. While never an official PTO member, I've been a frequent volunteer, a regular chaperone, and we recently just finished a season of fifth-grade girls' basketball as a coach there. So go Blue Devils! Through all of this, I've had the chance to see firsthand how this district functions, the challenges it faces, how it's evolved, and how it continues to rise to meet those challenges. In general, I have an enormous belief in public education as a cornerstone of community, equity, and opportunity. I believe in our district in particular, because MRH is a very special district. In the, in the sense of the St. Louis region, it's a very small district. It's very community-oriented, and it's incredibly diverse, both socio-economically and culturally. That gives us an incredible strength, but it also presents very unique challenges that we need to rise to face. Some of those challenges come from within, such as staffing shortages or budget realities. Others come from outside, from state legislators, political pressure, or even tension in our own community discourse. But in every case, I've seen the district stay focused, hold its course, and keep its eye on the future. Y'all know this, but since earning its full accreditation in 1999, MRH has grown into one of the most respected districts in the state. Just last year, we earned a 97% on the annual performance report, which is the second-highest score in the entire state. And that's big stuff, and I don't believe that that happened by accident. That comes from thoughtful leadership, consistency, and the tireless work of educator staff and a board who believes in the kids. But that doesn't believe we're perfect or above accountability, because no district is above critique, and no, no leadership body is above that accountability. But I do believe that we're on the right track, and I believe it's an important track to be on, because even with all that progress, the challenges we face continue to evolve. Technology is advancing rapidly. Career paths are shifting. The economy is unpredictable, and the political climate is frankly pretty scary. Students today are growing up in a world where education is being politicized, critical thinking is under attack, and basic truths are even up for debate. Which isn't just frustrating, it's kind of dangerous. So it makes our responsibility as a district even more urgent. But again, MRH has shown again and again that it can continue to rise to those challenges, and I want to lend my efforts to that work. I believe that the track we're on just needs three things to keep moving forward effectively, and that's just that our staff needs meaningful support from the board and the community. Our administration needs the trust and collaboration of the board. And our community needs clear, transparent, and consistent communication. These are not competing truths, they're all concurrent realities. If I'm appointed to this board, I will continue to lend myself to honoring all three of these. I'll bring the same commitment that I've brought to my years of community outreach and nonprofit service, and I'll stay focused on the on-growing growth and evolution of our district for every student, family, and educator in it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, and next we have Mr. Jim Bryan. Bryan, right.
Hi, I'm Jim Bryan. I'm a MRH parent, and I'm very grateful to the school district, all the teachers. I'm grateful to this board. I think there's been a lot, years and years of really hard work and collaboration to make our schools what they are. And I just want to offer my help to support what's been going on, ongoing. And I really appreciate this board passing those, getting those referendum for the voters and it being passed by the voters by over 80%. I think there's a lot of, it's felt divided in our district, honestly, for a couple of years, but I think that the community is less divided than it seems, and we're all here about the kids. And so I'm a, I've spent most of my career in special education. It's very important for me, everybody in the school be valued and feel like they have a community. And that's the way my kids feel, and I would want to promote that. And I think to promote that, we have to also take care of the staff, whether it's the teachers or the certified staff, the non-certified staff, and the non-instructional staff. I was a paraprofessional for three years, and now I'm an occupational therapist, but I, again, just appreciate the chance to be here and introduce myself. I think there's a lot of great people here who could do a good job on the board, and thanks for your consideration.
Thank you. And are you Mr. Kieran Gutting?
I am.
Is it Gutting or Gooding?
Gutting.
Gutting, okay, you're up.
I'm up. Well, how about that? Just got a couple notes here if that's all right. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Kieran Gutting. My wife and I, Dacia, have lived in this district for over 20 years. Our two daughters graduated from MRHI, class of '21 and '23, with our youngest also completing her education at South Tech. We've cheered for Blue Devils from the bleachers and the sidelines. We've walked the halls, enjoyed the theater, waited in carpool lines, and like many MRH families had the plan, if anyone gets lost, we'll all meet up at Oscar. We've seen the difference this district makes, and we are deeply, deeply grateful. I'm a parent. I'm your neighbor. I'm a nonprofit board leader, a professional with over 15 years' experience, guiding people to make complex, high-stakes decisions. I serve on the board and finance committee of IFM Community Medicine. We partner with private enterprises and school districts like MRH to bring health care to the underserved community. I've led through COVID, through growth and hard times, always with the focus on service. I understand that I might not be the most familiar face here this evening, and I understand that choosing me may feel like going out on a limb, and I know what that feels like. The footing might feel uncertain, especially when you're part of something strong like this board. It is often tempting to choose that which feels safest. But see, all trees eventually stop growing upward. Whether it's at 10 feet or 300, vertical growth ends. And when that happens, the only way forward is through the limb, and I'm a limb. I'm not a twig that snaps, and I'm not that dead wood that deceives you, that looks strong, but collapses in the gentlest of storms. I'm a strong, thriving limb. I'm a new piece of growth. I'm a new part of the future. I have no agenda. I'm not here to push or cause. I'm not here to grind an ax. I bring real-world experience and a deep commitment to all students, staff, administrators, and board members. I'm here to serve with humility, grace, honor, and steady hands. You see, MRH is a remarkable place. You might live in an MRH district, and that might mean you live in a $2 million home or a Section 8 apartment. Your student might have gotten a perfect 36 ACT or has always struggled academically. Your student in this district might be a leader, or it might be someone wondering how do they fit in and is there a place? And the beautiful truth is this, and it's simple. At MRH, there is always a place to belong. I'm an advocate for each and every one of you, for each and every one of those students, especially those still figuring out where and if they fit in and how we all move forward. The trunk offers stability, and it's necessary. But the limb, the limb is where growth happens. Limbs extend what is already strong. They bring sunlight to leaves. They bring shade to those below and protection in a storm. And when needed, they bear fruit. And I know that I can be that limb for MRH. So yeah, choosing me might feel like you're going out on a limb, but know this, it's a strong one. One that complements the trunk, not usurps from it. One that brings growth and inclusion for all. In closing, I'd like to thank my fellow applicants for taking the time and the commitment to offer to serve, and to the current board, your commitment to service for our community. I know the energy, time, and emotion it takes, and I would be deeply honored to join you in this work. Thank you.
Thank you. And then the last applicant withdrew, correct? They're up there. All right, so now comes the difficult part for us, because it is true, you're all All right, so now comes the difficult part for us because it is true, you're all very qualified and amazing applicants. So, how this process is going to work, because this is, this is new for us. There have never been so many candidates, and it's a lot to start with. So, uh, I'm going to confirm with everybody here that, uh, our process will be, um, for the first, the first step we will take is each board member will provide their top three candidates, ranked first, second, and third. And then, um, a score will be assigned, the opposite, three for first, two for second, first, one for third. And then the two candidates with the most points will advance. If there are more than two, then, um, we will do ranked choice again. So, um, to start, I believe Trent, did you send a spreadsheet that I can just put this in?
Yeah.
All right. I think someone knows how to do a spreadsheet here. All right. Okay. Oh, okay, okay, I got it. So, um, would anyone like to go first? Do you want me to just call on you? Does anyone want to start? I just want to go down the line. All right, Trent, I'm gonna, can I start with you?
Uh, first choice Colvin, second choice Gudding.
Okay, wait, sorry.
Yeah, that's right, we gotta, we gotta write them down, that's right, all full name.
Well, no, I can't, how do I, I can't get it to let me write in it. Um, hold on. Sorry, of course, the technology that... I think I got it. There it go. Helps if you open it. All right, um, oop. I'm sorry, everyone. Uh, all right, you had Loretta Colvin?
Colvin, Gudding, and McMatkin.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, Bryan?
Yeah, uh, this is not an easy choice at all. I wish I could name, uh, four or five, so, um, and I'm, um, even deliberating even as I speak now, but, um, my first choice is Loretta Colvin. My second choice is, um, Kieran Gudding, and third choice will be Rachel Lindsay.
All righty, um, I'll, I'll go ahead so I don't get... Uh, my first choice would be Loretta Colvin. A second would be Kieran, uh, Gudding, and also third, Rachel Lindsay. All right, Julie, you want to?
No, no, um, yeah, a diff- difficult choice.
Yes.
Um, I think any of you would be amazing on this board, and so I, I took the approach of, of what are we kind of missing on this board? We have a lot of high school parents, and so I was kind of looking for maybe a little more diversity. And so, my choices reflect that, so I just wanted to...
Yes.
Say it all out. All right, Demetrius Easley is my one. Two is Rachel Lindsay, and three is Jim Bryan.
Rachel's... Okay.
Jim, that's my third.
All right, thank you. Katie?
Uh, I also, um, found this incredibly difficult and also, um, am trying to be guided by the equity questions, um, of the board. Uh, so my choices are Easley, Bryan, Lindsay.
All right, and then Josh?
Okay, um, same. I, I think that, um, you know, it's a good thing that I don't necessarily recognize a lot of people here, um, which is sort of a double-edged sword because I know that, um, almost everybody is displaying a commitment in one way or the other to the school. Um, but, you know, based on what I feel like the board is convincing, um, my first choice is Easley, my second choice is Lindsay, and my third choice is Bryan.
What was your first choice, Josh?
Um, I'm sorry, Easley is my first choice.
Okay, and then, I'm sorry, your second was?
Lindsay.
Okay, Rachel, Lindsay, all right. And then your third choice was Jim Bryan?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so now I have to... I have to, oh, okay, oh. Oh, so now I have to do, sorry. Not quite following here. I guess I, I'm just going to add a three, six, nine for both of them, right? Right? Oh, you think, yeah, right? Right, because there's no way. That's math, right? You're good. All right. Right? I'm going to have, ba- based on numbers, uh, yes, you were, I think, right? Because this would be two, four, eight, yeah. Two, four, six, yeah. Nine, 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 yeah. All right, so the final two candidates would be Loretta Colvin and Demetrius Easley. All right, so now, yes? Yes, congratulations to everybody. All right, so now we will, um... Sorry, I gotta find my notes here. Now I just, I guess, um, for each candidate, well, candidate will hold a vote, correct? Yes, which I'm going to guess how this is going to go. All right, uh, the, I, math I can't do. All right, this, the first, um, let's see. All right, Loretta Colvin, uh, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, Demetrius Easley, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so this is what we were... What's the next step then, Trent, on your, uh...
Well, the next step was to take a break and think about things. And it could be that we take a break until the next meeting.
How do you all want to...
It, I think it should be clear to the public that we have sixty days to fill the seat from the, since the time of the resignation was accepted. And if it's not able to be filled, it goes to the St. Louis County Council and the county executive appoints. Just so you know.
Is that by state law?
Yeah, but it's also in our, yeah, in state law.
Yeah, okay. So...
I mean, I don't know if y'all want to talk about it, or, I mean, would that be helpful, maybe? Okay, um, and, I mean, I guess I'll start, like, um, it is a really tough choice for me. Um, you know, I've spoken with Loretta and we've, you know, past each other, you know, in the community at various functions or whatever, um, I have nothing but respect for her. I think she would be a great candidate, but I feel like the board is underrepresented in certain demographics as well as perspectives. And I think that while she is certainly would be an asset, I feel like we would be better served with Mr. Easley.
Those are my thoughts, too. Um, you know, we have, it's a board of six right now with four high school parents and then two that are, that are not in the high school. You know, and I was kind of looking for that, that perspective. I know you've had kids in the district. I'm not, you know, negating that you haven't had kids in the district from the early years, but things have kind of changed in some of those buildings. And so, it's good to have, um, closer connection to that as well, you know, as well as, you know, the, the diversity aspect, right? Um, we, we preach that we represent the entire district, and right now, we really don't, so...
So, I guess I'll, um, I'll go next. Uh, I, I agree wholeheartedly, uh, with what you guys are saying. I guess for me, I was looking at this position a little differently in the fact that it's one year. Um, whoever fills it has to run if they want to stay in it. And so, for me, in, in terms of like, how do we best utilize this, like, having someone who is involved, you know, sort of up to date, for me, would be easier for us to sort of get through the next year and then, you know, come April, whoever wants to run, um, and go through that process. That, that was sort of how I was looking at it, but I, I agree wholeheartedly with, with everything you're saying. So, I mean, there is no good answer to any of this. I don't think we'll be at a loss with either candidate. So, um, that was just sort of the way I was looking at the position, I guess. Um, because it's a short term, it's one year, it's, um...
Can we ask the candidates if they would run again after a year? What are you, are you considering it? Just as a...
Yeah. I don't know if anyone else has any, that's a good question.
Yeah. I mean, for me, it's just a matter of, um, between the two candidates, again, both, uh, good candidates in a variety of ways, but one just by far and away has far more history of involvement with the school district, involved in initiatives, helping to, uh, pass bonds, um, involved in multiple, um, extracurricular programming as well. I, it's just the wealth of sort of district experience was key for me.
I feel the same way. Ms. Colvin, uh, she, she's been in front of us, I think, two or three times. She has been involved, um, over the course of the last two years, as far as I know, with almost every major initiative of, of the school board. And so, in terms of just sort of transition and what we need now, I feel like what we need is somebody who is experienced and familiar with the things that are going on now.
If I could just rebut it for a second, because I, I think that those are excellent points, but I also think that one of the challenges that we have had is to sort of bring outside people into the community. And, um, you know, it's great that we have involvement, but we don't want to turn into an echo chamber, and it's important to have other people's perspectives. And my concern is by sort of not doing that in this most benign way, that we are sending a signal that we are not really considering, like, we're not really open to the idea, which I, I don't, again, it's more reception, the reality, I think, because I don't think that y'all necessarily think that. Um, but that is just a concern of mine.
I didn't know, Katie, did you have anything to add?
Uh, much of what, you know, I was, um, thinking has been said. Um, you know, I do think that we collectively up here, you know, um, represent folks who have two-parent households, uh, with, you know, a mom and a dad. Uh, we ha- are all identifying as white folks, uh, and, um, I think, again, uh, you know, we have three PhDs up here. Um, there's a number of, um, sort of positions of privilege that we hold that, uh, not everyone in our community does. And I think that it is easy for us to gloss over the perspectives and the experiences of single parents, of, um, parents of children with special needs, uh, of parents who work in trades or in, you know, other fields that don't require, uh, you know, a college degree. Um, and so, again, thinking about expanding our, um, horizons and our commitment to diversity and inclusion here. Um, I will also say that I am, uh, I don't think it is a secret that, um, the board is still working through our ability to, um, have conflict. And I actually thought a law enforcement degree or, you know, experience might be an interesting sort of de-escalation.
Let's hope not. Jeez, jeez, Katie.
You know, that, uh...
Hope it doesn't. That's fair, that's a good point.
So, you know, I think, for the benefit of the community, you know, not, we, we haven't discussed this, so no one, no one knew what everyone, you know, wanted, you know, what their feelings were. So, I, I would personally like to take some time to reflect. I think that, I think everybody raised good points. I mean, I think that, again, there, we're not at any loss if, whoever we go with, so, I, I, uh, but I defer to everybody, you know. Would you like to have some time to think about it? I don't know, perhaps, uh, we would want to send up a follow-up questionnaire to the remaining two candidates to find more information? I mean, I, I don't know, I mean, that's a...
I think that's about the only chance we have.
I'm, I'm open to suggestions here, what people want to do.
I mean, that's, that's fine. I mean, I think that personally, um, yeah, people need to reflect about it because they are, you know, everybody's made good points, um, you know, about what, uh, what the role is, what do we need now? Um, you know, what do we see moving forward? What do it look, what it might look like? Um, you know, so I, I don't think it's a decision that should be rushed.
No.
Um, or, or where you feel like you have to make a decision, like, on the spot. And, and I think it would also be a good opportunity to get to know the candidates a little more.
That's, yeah.
You know, because that, that, that would be helpful as well, I think.
I, I agree. Got it. Everyone in agreement there?
Mm-hmm.
So then, would we make a motion to table, uh, the vote? Do we need to procedurally?
Yeah.
All right. May I have a motion to table the appointment to a future meeting? Which we will determine and let you know right away.
Motion to table the appointment of a, of a, the replacement board member.
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for, um, coming tonight and for sharing with us, so... Sure.